All right, I got six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First, can we start the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any amendments to special sessions of January 5th and January 14th?
I have something for the February 3rd minutes we need to change.
Well, for the special sessions.
Oh, you're just going down.
Yeah.
All right.
If there's no objection, those minutes are approved. So are there any amendments to the February 3rd meeting?
Yes, but the date in the very first line is December 16th, 2021, so we need. But it's labeled correctly at the top of the header, so we just need to change it there.
All right, with those minor amendments, there are no objections, those minutes are approved. Now for the board meetings of February 1st, 3rd, 8th, and 10th, are there any amendments? Hearing none, if there's no objection, those are approved. For the budget presentations of February 7th, 9th, and 10th, are there any amendments? Hearing none, and if there's no objections, those are approved. Next is the approval of requisitions for February 17th in an amount of $32,500. There are no objections, that's approved. For approval of accounts payable for February 10th, 2022, in an amount of $91,437.91. There are no objections, that is approved. For the accounts payable for February 17th, 2022, in an amount of $423,281.81. There are no objections, that is approved. For manual checks of February 11th, 2022, in an amount of $51,814.21. There are no objections, that is approved. For manual checks on February 18th, 2022, in an amount of $144,296.91. There are no objections, those are approved. And approval of payroll for February 17th, 2022, in an amount of $254,786.46. There are no objections, those are approved. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right, then we'll move on to public comment. And if you're online, please raise your hand. Remember, there's only three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone in the room that would like to go? Mr. David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County lifelong resident taxpayer. I'd like to bring to the commission's attention the first, on February 3rd, 2022, county commission meeting minutes do not include Mr. Tab's written comments, correspondence, slash information. Again, violation. If these minutes are already approved without the insert of said written comments. You put them into everybody else. On the board meetings, that were the 1st, 3rd, 8th, and 10th. You failed to put the proper information of why these properties were reduced. Several months ago, you denied my request and didn't even put in writing that you had. Again, a violation. This has already been approached to the State Property Tax Division on this matter. Budget provisions. That's just sad. You don't have enough information. The papers are all scribbled on, it's on the web. It's not very professional. I mean, we spent all this money, you got all this help. And you can't even put this stuff in perspective. Again, you've ignored the responsibility to fund the fire and rescue. There is no mention of it. ESA is a different division. Sheriff's Department, different division. You're required to fund it. Just because they get money from the state does not mean that you don't have the obligation. That money comes from a surcharge that every person that has insurance in the state of West Virginia pays into that. The consumer is paying for that, not you. You're required to do this. This is by law. That $900,000 that y'all took away from the last budget, and then didn't replace it. That's unbelievable. And then you filled your coffers with the hard money. $1.5 million saying that you did all this, now you're required or allowed to receive it back. Give them the money they needed. And also on the impact fees. Come on, guys. You took it away from the schools. Give it to the fire companies. This is not fair. My family's been here for almost 400 years. Everything is here is based on or built on what my family and those people have done. And yet you take advantage of them. And you don't put the infrastructure, but you let all these people come in here and build. I do not object to somebody doing something with their property. But what I do object to is putting the burden back on me. Having a commercial property, it's not even commercial, it's residential and you're charging me commercial prices on it. And it won't even allow me to have farming. A violation.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make public comment?
I don't have any online people.
Thank you, Jess. With that, I will close public comments, move on to agenda item number one. And you thanks the assessor for his honorations.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have one exoneration. It's in our 2020 personal property book, Shepherdstown District. Taxpayer has a duplicate tax bill for 2020, assessed value $3,500, tax amount $79.66. The applicant is Chris Levine, ticket number 316722.
I'm going to approve the exoneration of ticket number 31672.
Okay.
Moving second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is per se aye.
Aye.
Motion carries next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the sheriff on lock?
Yeah.
That makes us really. Okay, we can go ahead to number three, Ralph Blazey. Sorry, but I said that.
Good evening, I'm Ralph Blazey, I'm a lawyer that represents Peel Properties, West Virginia LLC. Here on behalf of Peel Properties to request an extension of the tolling agreement for the tolling period for the bonding agreement for the four year old property. Tried to lay out the reasons for it fairly comprehensively in the agenda request, but essentially it comes down to the waiting for the continued improvement of market conditions as well as the water, water rights that now have to hook into the city's water. So those are the two primary reasons, and there's more detail in the request. And I could answer any questions anyone may have.
Yeah, it's a good explanation, and you know, throw in the increased cost of building supplies.
It's a difficult situation.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. I guess I'll go ahead and move the motion to approve your request to extend the toll bond agreement, noting that existing condition, that the store management system is assisted to be redesigned to meet requirements of Jefferson County Store Management Ordinance as required by the county engineer, and that to redesign, consulting, plot changes or review and process insurance by staff. And to extend the expiration date by four years through February 19th, 2026, with the Thornhill subdivision, JC PC filed a number 2-17, and that the new amendment agreed to be executed and reported in the office of the county clerk.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is per se aye. Opposed, Bush Kerry stands. We can move back to agenda item number two, Sheriff Tom Henson.
Good evening, Sheriff.
Evening.
Here for two items. One is the, left my list in the office, but anyway, one is the centennial observation of Maidwan Coal Miners. I don't know if that's number two or number one, I can go back to the other one.
It's first.
I'm sorry?
It's first.
Okay. They're going to have a play at the old courthouse, and they're going to require a bit of security. Everything's going to happen at night. During the rehearsals, I talked to the chief bailiff, my chief bailiff, and he says that one bailiff can handle the door, let them upstairs. It's looked like about three hours a night. And they're going to have eight, eight and a half weeks of rehearsal, 12 hours a week. And then they're going to have the shows, and they're going to be minimal, I'm going to need a minimum of two bailiffs, one at the front door and one probably in the courthouse, possibly two bailiffs in the courthouse, depending on how many people are coming to this production. What I would like to do is, I'd like to set a special pay rate for them of $25 an hour. They're not, this is not a normal duty for the bailiffs as far as times. They're talking about six something to nine or 10 o'clock at night after they secure, so possibly up to four hours. And they're, like he says, they're normally nine to five weekends off kind of thing, and they're being asked to work past or come in for the special detail. And I don't know if we're going to be billing the people at production on for security or not, but I believe that the bailiffs that are coming, volunteer to work or signed to work deserve some extra money an hour for staying there for four, up to four hours a night until 10 o'clock at night before they secure the courthouse.
Is this the same play that Danny Lutz was involved in?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
We gave him some instructions at our last meeting, y'all recall what that was?
Yeah, he was supposed to give us the information of when the actual performances would be and the practices, and he did email those, and they have them forwarded to the sheriff, and that's where this information came in.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I would, you know, I will consider this, but I need to see these numbers in writing. This is too fuzzy. I need, and I know sometimes it's hard to nail down the details of the play, but we need more information, at least I do. Just the oral presentation doesn't give me the final number.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
And then I wouldn't really put that on you, I think that's more of Mr. Lutz.
Well, and I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, I can't consider this, don't have all the information.
I was going to say, because the one question I have, I, so, eight weeks of practice, 12 hours a week, but then you were saying they're going to need to come early and play, so like, how many hours are they going to be working?
I'm thinking about three hours a night. You know, that's being there before, you know, a lot of people show up early, so being there. I'm also going to request from Mr. Lutz a list of people that are going to be rehearsing. I don't want Joe Smo walking in, that kind of thing. They're going to, they're going to be, I'm going to have to limit access to the courtroom to only those people that are on his list. And so that's what I mean, and I make bailiff for the rehearsals, I pretty much stay at the, at the front door. And then when everybody's in, lock it up and, you know, keep an eye on both areas. And then when they're leaving, open the door, we're going to let them out and go for there. But it figure about three hours a night for the rehearsals. The presentation, I have no idea how long it's going to last.
Yeah, I'm with Commissioner Tab and Ant in that I like to understand the financial impact to us, and I'd also like to find out if we're going to be reimbursed for any of the coverage.
I agree, you know, I've gotten, really gotten nothing. I've had, I was at the judge's security meeting with Commissioner Hudson, and they said, oh, by the way, we're going to do this thing, I was like, what? Kind of thing, so I agree, I'd like to have more information on it. All I know is a centennial observation, observance of the Maidwan Coal Miners trial, which happened in 1921, I believe, or '22. So, anyway, that's item number one, and again, we'll be weighing on more information from Mr. Lutz. The second one is my department, and I believe you have the paperwork on your, in front of you, is applied for a Walmart community grant. Last year I had the computer cruiser competition, and I used my concealed weapons permit money, which I, because I'm allowed to use, but I'm trying to find other ways of financing that, I'm going to, it's next one's planned for June of next year, of this year. We also have a thing called National Night Out, which is police and the public get together, and I'm asking that we can apply to the Walmart grant to help subsidize and help finance some of these items, National Night Out, the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, anything that we were going to do involving the community and law enforcement to try to get, as you know, we're not looked on real well nowadays, and, but like with the cruiser competition, as Commissioner Stoller can attest to, there were kids crawling, crawling through cruisers and turning sirens on, and just had a great day, all day, and we're going to reproduce that again in June. But I'd like to have some more money to be able to do more things and not just use my, not use, if, not have to use my concealed weapons money, I can, otherwise, this, if they can help finance it up, and we're also looking for sponsors for it. But this is what that is, paperwork is the community grant for Walmart.
Well, I'll move to approve the verification of the sheriff's office affiliation and tax exempt status and authorized present time letter.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion?
I just applaud you for looking for outside funding sources.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I have this, do you have a folder?
But that's a call question, any more discussion? Hearing none, all is per se aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Bush Kerry stands.
Thank you. And I hope to hear something from Mr. Lutz soon about this, so I can get back to you about costs.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I have your letter, if you want, wait a second.
Okay.
Next item is number four, Russell Burgess. Thank you for being really early.
Good evening, everyone. I came to speak with you, and I want two issues. One is the gig ready broadband application we had spoke about before. We went through all of the technical assistance documents, sent all of those in, and we complied as they had asked us to do, and one of the things that they had brought up was a 25% match, which we would get to come back later and look at that. We submitted that, it went through review, and they came back and they said, even though we said 25% match is what we want, we want a dollar figure. They're looking for a dollar figure, and why they're looking for a dollar figure is, when they're looking for these projects, whether it be 20 homes or unserved or underserved addresses, or 100 addresses or 500 addresses, with a dollar amount, they can get a general idea of a project size and scope that they can look at. We looked at, I believe, approximately $4,000 per unserved, underserved address, but what they want is a resolution from you all specifically saying a dollar amount. It does not commit you to funding that. It simply gives them the idea of what kind of project size you all would actually be willing to fund. I open for questions, if you all would like, that I can try to go through what they've discussed with us as far as these.
Suggest some level of funding and what we get for, I mean, I don't know, it's been so long since we had a meeting. When we talked, wasn't, didn't we talk about this before, and we just kind of committed to the percentage, and weren't there some numbers initially thrown out?
We did, we went through things. It was suggested that some of the other areas that have done this have suggested 200,000, 500,000, it's kind of what you all would feel comfortable doing, like say, again, it does not commit you to this, but if you commit 200,000, that would be your 25% of a project. And it's not saying you would spend the whole month, the whole amount, but let's say they came up with 100 addresses at $4,000 per address. So that project would say, we could do this, and it was 100 homes or 100 addresses, that would be 400,000. A 25% mention in that case would be 100,000. It doesn't mean that you have to do this once it's been identified and put there, but they're looking to see, when they look at these projects, what are you willing to put out there dollar wise? Because they don't want to spend all this time and effort and say, hey, we've identified a project of 1,280 unserved addresses at $8,000 per address, and your 25% is this, and you say, oh, hey, no way, we're not going to do that. So they're trying to get an idea of what you would really be willing to commit dollar wise before they spend all the time and effort trying to identify relevant projects. Again, when we spoke about this before, in Jefferson County, they identified approximately 2,235 unserved, underserved addresses. Yeah, and one other thing that we've talked about is, with a project to bring fibers to a house, obviously, if you are on a main road, that, the house or that address may be, you know, very negligible, maybe it's $1,000, maybe it's $2,000. Maybe your address is two miles back a dirt lane, and there's two houses back there, and they say, well, for that, it's $40,000 to do that. That's part of the technical assistance, part of the program, is for them to identify these unserved and underserved addresses and say, here's what this project would entail. We've identified this project of 147 properties in this area with an average cost of $4,000 per address. And we using that as just a benchmark. Is that what's going to come out? We don't know, because different areas are different. Think of West Virginia, and think of some of the rural counties, and to use a term that my grandfather would use, they might be five miles up the holler, you know, and who knows what that's going to cost to do that. But again, it does not commit you to actually spending these funds, but it is supposed to be a resolution, this is what you would be willing to do. Obviously, if they come back and say, we're going to sort of tend houses at $25,000 per address, you're going to say, yeah, I think that's what we are willing to do.
So is there a timeframe? Do you need this information, or could this be something we roll into the budget for consideration? I don't want to commit something.
Right, I don't have Mr. Deemer here with this, but the technical assistance part of it, I believe we have 60 days to get the application in. This is something that the whole project, from start to finish, I think they're looking for 24 months.
24 months, and then you pay the money?
No, from, from the time of, of say now to they identify a project, we go forward and completion.
No, but.
You're saying.
How soon do we have to commit to a money, a dollar amount? That's what I'm asking.
Well, what happens is, as long as we don't have that commitment, they're not going to do any technical assistance, and what it comes about is, I think we're, to use a lack of a better term, it's just tabled.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying. They're not going to take any initiative or research, anything unless we put money on the table.
Well, that you would put a resolution saying you're willing to commit this, yes.
So I guess my question too is, I mean, it was originally only 25%, now they want a dollar figure.
Well, you're still, yeah, it's still 25% of the project. So if they identify a project that is $100,000, then the county would just be 25% of that. So they would provide the other 75%.
Does Mr. Deemer have a list of projects that they're being submitted or under, that we should really seriously consider, so we can come up with a dollar amount?
When we looked at the last meeting, and I should have brought those back with me, but we had two maps showing the unserved and underserved addresses in the county, both north and south, and I think on that you saw some areas, like in one area clustered together were approximately 180 addresses, in another area, I think it was 140, then in some areas you might have had 30 or 50, I don't recall off the top of my head. But I guess that's kind of the thought process that they're looking at. If you're saying that the average cost would be $4,000, they're looking at that, say, well, then let's look at this area, because that would match up with the funding that you're thinking about, and see if we could put together a project that would match the dollar amount that you want to. I just knew tonight, and I come and I don't bring all my paperwork, but I think I can answer most of these questions. I understand the predicament it puts you in, I guess, the only thing I can say is, again, the same thing as before, you don't have to do this, even if we identify our project, and we come back later and say, we've identified this project, here's the dollar amount it would cost, here's the 25%, would you be willing to do this? Of course, you know, if you say you're going to be willing to permit or commit $200,000, and they come up with one that the average cost is $4,000, which is what we're talking about per address, and then you don't do it, then I think that kind of doesn't.
Because if 2,200 folks at $4,000, it's like $8,000.
Yes.
Something like that.
And that's what you're saying.
You're not trying to make me do math, are you?
Is, we have 60, like 60 days from now, we would have to tell you whether or not.
I don't think that you have to, I don't think there is a deadline for this. I may be incorrect, Mr. Deemer wasn't here this evening, when the man was this evening, so I don't. Is he? If he's online, maybe he could check in and answer that question. He told me he wasn't going to be available, so.
Mr. Deemer, can you hear us? He unmuted himself. You know, I'll wait on him, I want to support doing what they can within the reality of our budget.
It's to a point, I might think like $500,000 is worth, but after we get done arguing the budget, we can only afford 20, like, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
I definitely see your point there, as far as that goes, I just don't know the answer as far as a deadline, as far as dates and times.
And I think the, I think these monies we can take out of our funds, right?
That was my understanding when we spoke before.
Yeah.
I was thinking that too.
I mean, if we don't have to commit, you know, commit hard to it, I don't mind just throwing out a number of like 500,000 myself.
Well, I say, you do not have to commit hard to that, and I'm not asking for a particular dollar figure. I say there are, in the county, even though they've identified 2,235, I believe there were more, but even with the 2,235, I'm sure there are some that, they come back and say, well, to serve this address, because it is two miles back a dirt lane, we're not going to do that.
Uh huh, sure.
I think, you know, we want to reach the majority of the people that we can, and pick some of these projects that are more clustered together, and we can serve the greatest number of citizens. I mean, there's only so much money that we have to do things, and I think we try to get the biggest bang for our buck, and I don't know if you, you know, you look at certain areas of the county, and I know that each of you represent different areas of the county, and, you know, that's a different thing. I can tell you that I have had a number of calls lately of people who are moving to the county from, I don't want to say the DC area, but the DC metropolitan area, and they are aghast. I have a lady that I talked to for an hour and a half this last week, because she is purchasing a home, and she cannot get internet, and she is completely remote based, and she says, I am going to lose my job because of the service I get. And I, I don't know what to tell her. She says that she thinks that Comcast is now willing to do the area they're at, there's four houses, they want $12,000.
Yeah.
And she said, so that's what we're looking at, she says, my problem is, I don't know that my other three neighbors are going to do it. Yes.
Well, I know of some real estate sales that have fallen through, because there's not. good enough. And wouldn't that be in only a couple houses in a remote area, even 12,000?
Um, again, that's one of the things with the projects that we're looking at. What kind of projects can we find that would meet the dollar amount that we're willing to put out there?
I'm just saying, to your example, like five miles on the beach path.
When we look at the areas that we're identifying on the map, I mean, we can come back and say, this is the area we want to look at for the technical assistance. And that's where their people will come out and give us, you know, these costs, what it's actually going to run to do this. So we can look at those areas and say, here are the areas that we want to concentrate on. You know, I don't know how you, how you pick and choose areas, because then I feel that you have citizens feel you're leaving them out, because you picked this area, and you're like, why didn't you pick my area? But again, to me, it's dollars and what is the best bang for our buck? If we spend however much money, how many houses or how many addresses can we serve? Not where they're located, but what's the most that we can do for our citizens?
Well, I'm going to suggest we roll this into budget deliberations. That's going to take us next month, to the end of March. Give our chief financial officer some research, or remind us as we go through budgets, that we have this piece to, you know, consider.
If you would like, what I can do is I can get with Mr. Deemer, I can get with them in reference to the technical assistance and see what the deadline is. And if they come back and say, you have 30 days, 60 days, something like that, I can come back and get on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can do that.
That would be good.
And that gives you more time and a better chance to evaluate dollars and what you want.
And maybe you could tell us what other counties are doing, so we can gauge where we think we might have to be at, perhaps.
That was actually brought up, as far as some of the other counties and what they were doing. And I kind of hesitated to do that, because I thought that with us, we should look at our citizens and what we are able to do. I don't think comparing us to some of the other counties in West Virginia is, I don't think it's a
Yeah, there's not many calls. No, I wouldn't. Yeah, I don't think Apple, Lake County, maybe Berkeley, or somebody close to us.
Yeah. Yeah, because Lake, they have
They don't have a traffic light, and they don't have a grocery store.
Yeah, true. But, yeah, no, if you could, I don't know if that's possible or not. And I think these funds would be taken out of ARPA, so it wouldn't be necessarily a general budget decision, it'd be more of an ARPA fund decision.
Well, we can research how much we have in the pot and what we want.
The other thing that I understand is that we do have some of the internet service providers, because there are the gig-ready part that we're doing, and then there's the other part for the ISPs, and some of them are also competing for these dollars too. So there are other programs out. It's not just all on us as far as trying to get these dollars. So we do have others out there looking for that, too. Okay, I will do that, and then, like I say, I will get back with you and get back on the agenda.
Okay.
Ready for my next issue? Okay. The next one that we have is, we have run in the past an internship in the information technology department. We have had a number of interns over the years. We've had some wonderful, wonderful interns. We've actually hired two of them who have worked out and been great, and we have given them experience to go on. One of the first ones, excuse me. The first ones that we had now works for Cisco in the Raleigh-Durham area. If you're familiar with IT certifications, he has a Cisco CCNA, very difficult certification to get, he got a very good job. Very proud of him. We typically get our interns from Blue Ridge Community and Technical College. We have an intern liaison, Amber Butcher, there, who refers them to us. We would very much like, with our data center refresh project starting to ramp up, we feel we have a chance for an intern to come in and teach them not just the day-to-day IT help desk, but also a data center build out. So what I'm asking is their requirements are 150 hours, and I would like to, if possible, reimburse them. I think I put them there at $12 per hour for 150 hours. This is, can come out of IT budget. We have that money available, so it's not, we're not requesting new funds. And I think this is a great project for the students in the area that come here.
So this is budget neutral?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do a motion to approve the one internship within IT department to meet the graduation requirements for Blue Ridge Community and Technical College. It proves, will be, the proof, the approval cycle will be $12 per hour for 150 hours of internship.
Second.
Moving second, is there any more discussion?
I just think this is a wonderful opportunity, and it fits with the intern and us.
It has been wonderful for us. It has really worked out.
A question ahead, do we need the name and the start date for people? Or are we fine?
You have the name?
We are interviewing two people tomorrow. I did not want to bring them, I didn't want to have them come in if we were not going to do this.
Okay.
When are they going to start?
We usually leave that available to them as far as their schoolwork, but typically within a couple of weeks. If you like, I believe I'm going to be on the next agenda. I can bring you back the name. Yeah, I can bring you back the name of who it is, but I just want to make sure that you all were agreeable to this, before we brought them in and put them through this.
Okay, well, it's been moving second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye. Host, wish carries.
Thank you. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Next, I have Mr. Allen.
Right at the right time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm before you this evening for two topics. One is to ask for signature to put, if you put on for our emergency management performance grant for 2019. As I indicated in our budget presentation, FEMA, forever moving, anyway. But we have completed the paperwork, the documents for the grant, and we have submitted the amounts, and the amounts that I submitted for, and normally, they pay 50% of your operating expenses for personnel, for telephones, all the different things that are many times within our budget. However, the amount that FEMA through the state of West Virginia gives us does not meet it at all. Historically, it has not. I submitted an amount of reimbursement for $204,000, $204,090.41. Of course, half of that would be, and it's a 50%, half of that would be $102,045.20. But anyway, the amount that they approved is $75,000. And that's, like I said, historically, that's how it operates. We ask them for 50%, and they only give us what they can give us out of the federal grant monies. They, the way they determine that is, they give every county an equal amount of one amount, and then by population, they give additional funding to us. So that's how that 50% comes out, or up to 50% comes out, but it never, it never does. But anyway, what we're asking for as a county is 75, the amount that they approved, which is 75,000, with the understanding always that if they have additional monies left over from the 2019 EMPG for the state throughout the state, then they will also offer that, some of those additional amounts up. And we've gotten monies back before, but never the total amount. It just, it never works out that way. But what I have is the emergency management performance grant award letter that normally would be done before the grant, but the state of West Virginia, over the last three years, has been under investigation by FEMA. They've had all kinds of audits done and things like that. So that's how they've had fallen behind in getting those monies out. They are working on it, I got to say. And we expect the 2020 to come out real soon, and then, of course, after that, then the 2021, and if we can ever get it started. But the federal government, that's just the way the federal government works, unfortunately, as I think we all know. But, so I'm before you asking for a signature on the performance grant award authorization, authorizing them to pay the county back $75,000. And once again, with the understanding that there's additional monies left over, they'll offer out supplemental grants, and whatever that leftover is, we may be able to get some of it. I don't know if we'll ever get all of it, but, and that's just on the salaries right now.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 emergency management performance grant award document reimbursement in the amount of $75,000, and authorize presence on the document.
Second. Moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye. Host, wish carries.
Would you like to sign it now, or do you want to wait until the other stuff? So a second. I'll bring it up while it's hot on my mic. Okay, you got blue. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that. My second reason for appearing before you tonight is to ask for permission to post the vacancy for our administrative assistant, public information officer, volunteer coordinator. Our volunteer coordinator, well, the person in that position resigned last May, and we've done without a person to fill that position. And I was doing it by myself until we hired on Dick Myers, and that took care of some of my planning responsibilities, but a lot of those administrative, or administrative duties, as well as our public outreach, with our newsletters and things like that, have fallen upon me. And as we come out of COVID, we're hoping to be able to go out and do the public outreach and many of the other duties that the administrative assistant, public information officer, volunteer coordinator would be doing or should be doing. And as we come out of it, if we want to continue many of those programs as efficiently as we have in the past, it would certainly prove us to have all three of us on board. So the planner can do the planner things, the administrative assistant and public information officer, volunteer coordinator can do their things, and I can do the emergency manager type things. And I'm hoping for questions and comments and everything else.
Is this a budget neutral item, you know?
It, I'll say yes and no, because it was budgeted for this position. However, the amount that was put in the budget that came before me was short. According to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual salaries pay scale that you had, this person is under a grade four, 80 hours per week, and the starting on it is 37,750. And the amount, and if Rick has that number, what was on, that was on the, I don't, I don't have my budget on there, but it was short. I think it was 327, if memory serves me right, instead of 37,750, 37,325 or 327, I think. So you're looking at a difference of what? $425 difference.
And that is in your, this current year? So there would only be payout for a few months before you start your new budget?
Well, the budget that you have before you to consider now, has that person listed at the, basically the 37,325, I think, instead of 37,750. And that's why I'm saying, the present year, we're definitely good. There's money in the budget for that, to answer that question. The second one is for July 1st and on, there needs to be additional $400 or so put into the budget to
So you need to adjust your budget request for the coming year that we're going to start considering?
Yeah.
If we decide to hire.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I guess since it's budget neutral with a glitch of $425, essentially, I'll go ahead and move to approve to announce a position for administrative assistant, public information officer, and volunteer coordinator, and the amount of 37,750.
Second, is there any discussion?
I just have a comment, Steve, if you're posting this job description, can you just make sure the grade level's on there and the current date of, and we update or anything?
I would love to, but I do not have that document. I don't know where those documents are held.
Yeah. Just make sure it's
Absolutely, I would, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
I just could not come up with it. I looked through a whole bunch of files.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye.
Thank you all very much. We'll get on that immediately.
If not, sooner.
Hello, I have two requests for two budget approvals tonight. One is for the general fund, which has five particular points to it, and the other is the coal severance fund, which has one point. The first one is to basically report an adjustment to get from the ending balance of fiscal year 2021 to the starting point of 2022. The second point is for an adjustment, additional funding needed for the crime scene investigation paid for by the state grant. The third is a $5,000 amount that the state set back on December 9th, that they're basically giving to us to fund the electric election redistricting. And then point number four is basically some employee compensation transfer items that you are aware of. The fifth one there is a true-up of the sheriff's travel for court mandated travel, and then scaled back by 75%. So to true that back up, it required an additional $5,250. So those are the five points on this one, and I just need your signatures if it's approved.
I move we approve the 2022 state budget revision number three for the general county fund.
Second. Moving second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye. Host, wish carries.
The second one is the coal severance fund, that again, is just a adjustment to go from the fiscal year ending '21 to the beginning of fiscal year '22, and in the amount of $190, 3600.
I'll move that we approve the 2022 state budget revision number three for the coal severance fund.
Moving second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all listen favor say aye. Host, wish carries. Next, I have item number seven, Stephen Rettwell, West Virginia Department of Arts, Culture and History. That will be one line of persons.
I may have to help you with this one, because he's a YD, so he's not available or anything. I think just then, so that he was going to tell to the judge.
I sent the information to Judge Hammer, just to make sure that he was okay with photography in the courtroom and courthouse, but I have not heard back from Judge Hammer regarding his feelings on this request.
Yeah, that was my note I wrote to myself to the judge first.
And I don't think there would be an objection. Who knows?
And I'm sure there would be an impact for the judges, you know, I mean, the judge and the sheriff. I mean, it might have been
Right, yeah.
An hour or two, but
We can have a
Yes, someone's got the letter in and
So you're going to get more information?
Yeah, he wants to be here on the 26th. That's the problem. And not being available and not reaching back out to us. It's just kind of weird. But I hate to turn, yeah, it's a culture tale. What they're going to do is, I guess, they're taking pictures and they're going to be featured in a calendar.
Yeah. I get one every year.
Are we giving any personnel pending?
Well, that's true.
Here for the judge and for sheriff.
And, yeah, okay. I'll move a motion that to approve this request pending approval from Judge Hammer. And that we have adequate or files available and for no longer than, say, two hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
According to gender, it's 30 minutes.
Oh, 30 minutes, hour.
Yeah, hour, just set up and all that stuff, yeah.
And, and yeah, so we'll add that just to have an hour of time that they could do that.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Post, wish carries.
And Judge Hammer doesn't have court every day. If it was like the day before on Friday on the normal business hours, I'll still have that out there.
He's not available that day. The travel thing. And he says it's happening that Saturday. Because he's making pictures everywhere else. He's from Charleston, he's from Long Beach. Maybe it's like even a lot of men on the shore. And they usually have people call the maintenance. Because they, you know, they don't call anyway for weekends. And not the judge may not want to do it.
Sure.
There might be other reasons.
Sure. But if it's only an hour, half hour, it's not that, not that big of a deal.
Yeah.
It's not the eight weeks, three hours a day like this.
Yeah.
Nathan, it's the Nathan Cockburn hour. You should have just the time, buddy. Yeah.
I'll try to make up some time.
You came here just in time.
Yeah. You're on the internet.
We're running slightly early.
No, just watch.
We'll brag too soon.
Yeah.
We'll be running late.
So Mr. President, out of my time, there are a couple of things that I need to bring to your attention in the public session. The first is the intergovernmental agreement. If you will recall, we have an agreement between us and Bolivar and the sheriff. And the sheriff provides law enforcement for Bolivar and also collects taxes. And those agreements expire yearly. But there's a lot of hoops you got to jump through. I have to get you all to approve it. And then the sheriff has to sign off on it. And then he has to go to Bolivar and they have to sign off on it. And then it has to go to Charleston and has to be reviewed down there and be signed off on. And then are just approved. And then it comes back to us and then we file. So that's why we're starting here a little early. I've been speaking to the attorney for Bolivar. And you had the agreement, I believe, in your packet. I would say that nothing has really changed since last year except for there is a requirement in the agreement now that the that we file the we file the agreement just in our files and then give the gives a copy of the file sealed copy back to Bolivar. And also, I would say that there is a small change in this document from the one that you have in your packet. And it's just really a very small change. And it's in the Public Safety Services Agreement. And it's in section one F and G. The there were, was just a couple of words added. In F, it talks about the sheriff providing deputy work in Bolivar full time. And the words staffing permits were added to that. And the same words were added to G, assigning two specific deputies to this detail, staffing permits. And that was just placed in there to allow the sheriff to have just a little bit of flexibility in getting people arranged and getting them there to work. And Bolivar has seen that and Bolivar's attorney has seen it too. I think we're all in agreement. The sheriff is in agreement with this document too, it's just a formality that we can decide. So if you all, if it's your pleasure to re-enter into this agreement, then you've got two separate agreements there. One for Public Safety Services and one for Tax Collection Services. And if it's your pleasure, you would both to enter into that agreement, to adopt it and send it off for appropriate signature.
I'll move to renew the two intergovernmental agreements between the County Commission, Sheriff's Department, and Corporation for the Collection of Taxes and Public Safety Services.
To move in second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, wish carries.
Very well. As far as other items that I have under my agenda item, we have some discussion to be had regarding the proposed solar tax amendment and a variety of issues related to that. We also have a number five was added, a discussion for Article 147 of the the City of Charlestown's ordinance. And it's essentially related to the agreement that the City of Charlestown had with the County Commission concerning when we sold the assets of the Public Service District to Charlestown. And there are some matters that they have to abide by. And we just have some questions about that. And Mr. Roebach was here to discuss the solar issues with us. And since Mr. Roebach was the person who dealt with the transfer of the assets of the Public Service District, I also asked him to to state for that issue. But I believe that we have some things that I need to discuss with you and give you some legal advice regarding both item number one and item number five.
How many did we get in executive session to receive information from our attorney, Mr. David Cochran? If you go by the word well, on the items under his, under the agenda of items number one and number five?
And I'm just going to amend that to say legal counsel.
And receive legal.
Legal advice.
Legal advice.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Post, we are in executive session.
Moving on to the executive session.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Is any more discussion? Here are none. All is clear, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to direct you
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to direct you, Commissioner Hudson, to sign a letter related to Article 147.
Second.
I second that motion.
So moving to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye. Most carries unanimously.
And I think there was another matter we wanted legal counsel to proceed as directed during executive session that doesn't specifically, you know, deal with this first motion. There was a second action we wanted you to take.
Second then. Moving to second. Is there more discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
Just for the record, I would just like to state that during the discussion regarding the solar matter, that Commissioner Stoller recused himself and left the room for that discussion. Just so we're clear.
As for Gen I number nine, we're going to postpone any action on that for now. Is there anything else coming for the commissions? I believe there was one county administrative report.
Good evening, everybody. Wow, finally here, day two. And I want to, I want to thank Commissioner Stoller that he met with me yesterday. We drove around most of the afternoon, met a lot of elected officials and a lot of department heads. So thank you for that. That was great. So my head was ready to explode by the evening, but I gained my composure and came back today. I'm spending most of my time right now leaving me the budget, which we have hearings tomorrow evening, as well as the staff work program. So I'll be spending a lot of time just diving into that. But I do want, I do want to mention one thing for the record. I would like to recognize Sandy McDonald for, as the deputy county administrator. The outstanding job she performed as the acting county administrator over the past three, four months. I think Ms. McDonald's efforts to keep the operations of the county moving forward was performed seamlessly and successfully. So hats off to Sandy. I think she did an excellent job. And I just wanted for the record to recognize her. I think it's very important. I know that you had a big lift and you did it very, very well. So I, you know, I will be continuing to ask you the hundred questions. That, that is all I have.
Well, I agree Sandy did an outstanding job and does an outstanding job every day.
All right. Is there anything else coming for the commission? If there's no, hearing none, if there's no objection, we are.